I'd like to call to order the organizational meeting and we'll rise and say the pledge together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have oath of office. And at this time, I'd like to welcome our newest board member, Mr. Jeff Ward. I'm so glad to have you on the board and to welcome back Ms. Ragola-Dye. So we're very happy that you're both joining us again, one of you again and one of you.
Just repeat after me, sir. I, Jeff Ward, solemnly swear.
I, Jeff Ward, solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
As a member of the Board of Education of the Mount Vernon City School District.
As a member of the Board of Education of the Mount Vernon City School District.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws now in effect.
And in accordance with the laws now in effect.
Hereafter, to be enacted during my continuance in said office.
One more time.
Herein after, I'm sorry, sorry about the math. Herein after to be enacted.
Herein a, here, hereafter to be enacted.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
And until my successor is elected and qualified.
Until my success, until my success for her is elected and qualified. Say I will, I do.
Congratulations.
Now for me, you might have to go a little slower.
Shorter pieces.
I, Mary Ragola-Dye.
I, Mary Ragola-Dye.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a member of the Board of Education.
As a member of the Board of Education.
Of the Mount Vernon City School District.
Of the Mount Vernon City School District.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws now in effect.
In accordance with the laws now in effect.
And herein after to be enacted.
And herein after to be enacted.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
And until my successor is elected and qualified.
And until my successor is elected and qualified.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. And welcome to both of you.
Thank you.
And I will open the floor for. Oh, roll call. Yes, absolutely. I'm thinking we're all here. Would you call the roll, please?
Ma'am, Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Ms. Ragola-Dye.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, thank you. Election of the board president. I'll open the floor for nominations for president.
I would nominate Dr. Marg- Marguerite Bennett, please.
No other nominations. Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Ms. Ragola-Dye.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
I abstain. And motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll open the floor for nomination for vice president.
I nominate Jody Getzmann.
I'll second.
And would you call the roll, please?
Give me a second. Ms. Ragola-Dye.
Yes.
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Abstain.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, and motion carried. Congratulations, thank you. And we have committee appointments. And I assume that everyone was okay with what was listed, alright. And then. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble keeping up with this. So if there are no changes and we'll approve the motion. I would entertain a motion to.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Mr. Ward, you have to get used to saying that. And would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Ms. Ragola-Dye.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carried, thank you. And attachment to, motion to approve the resolutions, and as you know, there are quite a few of those. So I would entertain a motion to approve all of the resolutions.
I make a motion to approve resolutions as presented.
Second, thank you, Ms. Ragola-Dye. Were there any questions on any of those? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Ms. Ragola-Dye.
Yes.
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carried, thank you. And we have appointment of legislative and student achievement liaisons. And OSBA delegate, we don't have a delegate listed. We're going to vote on all of those together. Do we have any? One who would be willing to do that? Volunteer.
I'll be happy to continue the legislative liaison.
Okay, and I'm willing to do the student achievement unless someone else would like to. I'm happy to give that up. And what about OSBA delegate?
I hesitate to do it in case it's going to be in person again and if the pandemic is still raging, I wouldn't feel comfortable.
Plug me in.
Okay, Mr. Ward is willing to do it.
I can do alternate.
And you'll be willing to do alternate. Thank you, Mrs. Getzmann. Okay, and then I would entertain a motion to approve those appointments as we just discussed.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Ragola-Dye. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Workman, and if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Ragola-Dye.
Yes.
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes. Well, I guess I can vote for student. I'll say yes. And motion passes, thank you. Makes it awkward if we, three of us don't vote, we don't have.
We don't have a corner.
We should have properly split those out. Okay, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting. And do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Ward, and if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Ragola-Dye.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, we are adjourned, signee die, which means we will immediately stay where we are and go into our regular meeting for this evening, and if you will, again, call the roll, please.
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Mr. Ward, here. Ms. Ragola-Dye.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, thank you. And I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our last two meetings, a regular meeting December 13th and a special meeting December 17th.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Ragola-Dye. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. And were there any corrections? Yes.
Should have, since I wasn't on the board at that time. Thank you.
And if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Ragola-Dye.
Yes.
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Mr. Ward abstain. Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carried, thank you. And I will turn over to our superintendent for commendations and communications.
Hi, you, Dr. Bennett, and welcome aboard, Mr. Ward. We're glad to have you with us. You've joined us in January, first month of the year. It is typically the Ohio School Boards Association recognition in celebrating school board members, and so it's my pleasure tonight to just hand each of you a certificate and to each of you for appreciation for your service to Mount Vernon City Schools. It's been a bit more of a challenging year this year, and I certainly appreciate your wisdom and your support and again, I think our community thanks you as well. So I'm going to present you, this certificate is presented to each of you at Mount Vernon City Schools for sincere appreciation for exemplary leadership and service to public schools. So Board Recognition Month, January 2022. And you'll notice in front of you and on your certificate is a bunch of raised hands and you know, certainly students that were here to serve and celebrate your service to them. So I'll hand those out to you at this time and you can give yourselves a little round of applause.
And I will take this opportunity to thank all the board members. I haven't worked yet with Mr. Ward, but Mr. Workman, Ms. Ragola-Dye, Mrs. Getzmann. Just outstanding individuals and I just appreciate your support and your faithfulness to this board and the way that you care about children.
I will also say there was a certificate for our past board member and so we're excited to be able to share that, share that with him as well. We're now at our reports on public participation. Pleasant Street Elementary is the building of the month. Who was going to present to the board. Pleasant Street, several years ago, we had a board presentation about their neurosequential model for education. They were dealing with a lot of different types of behaviors and challenges and they've really kind of embraced some opportunities to really kind of reach kids in a variety of different ways. Realized that typical school day is about six and a half hours or six hours and 50 minutes with students and they're going after pretty good during that time. And so during that time, they need little breaks here and there and they really have kind of taken the next steps of kind of creating these mini breaks. And so I'll share that in the form of a video. And we'll let it play up here for you.
This is what we use at Pleasant Street to enable students to regulate their emotions, relate to others, and respond meaningfully, regulate, relate, respond. We are promoting two innovative activities. One with meds to help keep the kids in a quiet mode so they get the most out of shaving cream sensory activity. And T, neurodeft brain激活activity cards are intended to support self-regulation and sensory integration when used in the context of positive relationships. The four broad activity categories match the four functional domains of the brain outlined by Dr. Bruce Ferri's neurosequential model so that we can select an activity that meets the developmental needs of the child, group, or class. Remember, the goal is to enable students to regulate, relate, and respond. My name is Missy Churis, we're in the group. This is, uh, this is today I am required R O T. But I need to be very careful when I during the school day achieving of students for their reasons.
Today I'm going to include the, um, the, uh, process one.
So this is the heavy one, right? So we have to go from first, right? Up and down, here we go. Each particular activity has a different need or different reason to function this way. So I'm, 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 I'm trying to either extend energy or get more energy so that the child can be more successful as they go back into the classroom. They're putting, using their strategies that we might have talked about here or that they already are learning on, say, the term, or the past term. So I think it's pretty hard in here, people, which activities we can come to. I think they're, they're on the end and like, like you know, back to class and being more focused, being more attentive, being more interactive. I guess it is more difficult to be so secure. So what do you have in front of you? How do you use the calming pattern?
We use it when we're mad, sad, scared, or frustrated.
What are some of the items in the calming pattern?
I'm tired. It has five minutes. It's like a warm. It's squish. But it helps you when you're mad. It's a sketch. But it's like a thing that helps you. With a ball, they do it right. Has a face. So when my timer's off, I'm using that.
Valorous X is for balanced auditory visual exercise. The red light activities are designed to address visual tracking issues. Unifying precision, impulsively, balance, and anxiety issues. Valorous X helps body systems to remain calm and sustained focus. Remember, the goal is to enable students to regulate, relate, and respond. It's a quite easy way for the students to take a morning break. The rhythm part of Valorous X is engaging for the students. It helps regulate them. They love doing it. You'll notice nobody's talking. They're focused, they're using both sides of the brain and crossing the midline. What does she have to do to make good election ads? Well, this is lots of.
Plan.
Practice. So we have to practice some of our strategies too. What are some of the strategies we're supposed to use to calm down?
Holding.
Breathing, that's what we're going for. In this social emotional lesson, misses the board of students can use breathing activity from the app mentioned ready to start resource. It lasts discussing strategies for calming down as well as growth mindset concepts. Regulate, relate, respond. Pretty fine lines. Yeah, you want to go one of the ball out. So let's try it. Take a sniff. Can we control everything? Now, there are some things that we can't control. More angry or more frustrated. So you got one of those things that we don't have control over. But there's some really important things that we do. What is it that you're supposed to remember to do? It's about the song. What are the steps?
Stop.
And you're feeling. What do you think is the hardest part, how to discuss? But calm down. I would have to agree with the way it's done. Trauma and chronic stress affects how our brains develop. And preparing a child to go into regulating emotions, work with others, or develop basic learning skills. The child could have complicated problems in school or seriously lagging in class needs. Couple of years ago, Pleasant Street's Nurse-O-Prune-John model for education team implemented this such a path in which students complete a series of movements designed to release the child's internalized tension and allow the body and brain to refocus. Well, then, Roxanne's for it's spelled R O X and it's stands for ruling our experiences. It's about empowering girls, it's helping girls be strong, independent, courageous, going after their goals and dreams and just building the self-confidence and self-esteem in girl.
I live in this garden to keep a heart straight because I am capable of ruling my own spirit. And I believe that I always believe well.
What we need to be going with those is that she wasn't challenged. What did she do? Yes. Should we go to school in the next day?
In this circle, we are trauma informed. We connect before we correct. We stay curious, not furious. We understand the behavior is communication. We believe in co-regulation, that kids regulate off the adults in their lives. We think can't, not won't. We empathize when someone is flipping their lid. We believe in restoration, not punishment. We believe that relationships buffer stress and build resilience. All of us meet one another, always. Resilience means we see you, we hear you, we are with you.
Okay, that gives you a little idea about some of the things that are going on at Pleasant Street. Obviously, again, when you're in six hours, six and a half or seven hours a day, to develop these little periods of time for students to kind of step back, kind of refocus and do some of those things. And a lot of these are put together to address specific kinds of behaviors and resilience so they can stay after with a growth mindset. So a little bit of a play, a little similar to what we had last week. It will make sure we try to bring some other things to you as well, but they've been one of our buildings that has been at the forefront of that. So Jommy Patel is the senior class president. She has a brief monthly report. It's only about a minute.
Hi, this is Jommy. And I would like to go over some of the things that are going on at Pitt's School. All winter sports are still in season. Swim has a meet on Tuesday, the 11th at Ashton. Boys basketball has a game on the 11th at Marion Hill. On the 14th versus Mark's and Fisher's on Thursday, two good. Girls basketball has a game on the 13th versus McSill's. There's a wrestling tournament on the 14th and 15th at Miami. The bowling match on the 11th at Henson. We have it since coming up this week in the close, and we're getting new books for the week 2017. We have a quarter week coming up and we also got a new support that we was currently with Officer Armstrong. There is a new intervention specialist, we see very stable but so messed up.
Hey, that was, that was a quick report from Jommy there. And I think we'll move on.
Thank you. I don't see Mrs. Nesslet this evening. Mr. Lang, did you want to share anything?
Thank you, Dr. Bennett. This time I'd like to congratulate Ms. Ragola-Dye for her recent election. There are many years of service to the board in the past and in the future. I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Ward for his recent election to the board.
Thank you.
His future service to the board. I want to say Happy New Year to all the board and all of the tennis society. You know, a new year is here and the new year always brings something new and different. Two years ago, in 2019, we learned about, or I'm sorry, 2020, we learned about 1119. A few short months later, you know, we were in shutdown. During that time, you know, the classified staff, who I represent, you know, the aides, bus drivers, cooks, custodians, they all became part of the frontline as we started to serve the students, you know. We kept feeding them, you know, as the shutdown went on. And then a couple of months later, we got to get back. There were some new expectations whenever we went back to school. You know, we had to make sure, you know, that our students and staff were safe. Our bus drivers, they were cleaning their buses and disinfecting between routes. Your custodians, you know, they clean during the day, disinfecting high traffic areas. You're talking your door handles, your handrails, you know, down the stairs and things like that. Then a more thorough cleaning at night. Yeah, so we fast forward, you know, to 2021, a new year began again, new hope. Uh, you know, we have a vaccine now. Hopefully, you know, we can get past this pandemic. Okay, we continued, you know, to disinfect and clean. Make sure, you know, that our staff and our students are all safe. Here we are in 2022 and here, another variant is still with us. The virus is resilient. But I wanted to make sure, you know, that the board and this community knows that our classified staff still, you know, bus drivers are still cleaning and disinfecting buses. and disinfecting the buses between routes. Our custodians and all the other staff, you know, continue to clean near the buildings during the day in the traffic areas to help everybody stay safe and well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And please express our appreciation to classified staff. We don't tell them often enough how much we appreciate them. We couldn't be in session if it weren't for the monumental efforts that they have made. So we thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're to public participation, and I would like the public to know that the board welcomes community input and follows up on Concerns Express. And we do have some guidelines. Each participant will be required to state your name and address and to speak not more than three minutes. And furthermore, I'm requesting that you consider the tone and language and to be respectful of our administrators, our teachers, our staff, and our students in whatever you say, to refrain from repeating rumors or hearsay about which you have no personal knowledge, experience, or evidence. Secondly, to use appropriate, respectful, civil language and to refrain from foul language. And thirdly, I would point out that there are more appropriate venues to express a legitimate personnel concern about an individual than in a public meeting, such as making an appointment and meeting with the individual and his or her supervisor. And with those things in mind and assuming that you will abide by them, I'd like to call in the first individual, Shannon Quinn.
Good afternoon. Shannon Quinn, 620 West Gambier, Mount Vernon. I'm coming tonight because of the lack of communication that the parents are receiving. We've had numerous occasions where communication is lacking. We had a threat at the Career Center with a weapon involved, and no communication came out to the parents. I understand that the Career Center is its own entity. But what I also understand is we have students that go back and forth between these two schools daily, and for the threat to not be notified to the parents for us to find out via social media for the second time. The first time I found out on social media was when our school went on lockdown, actual lockdown. And Bill Cedar knew about it. We discussed this. And he apologized. He said, "You're right. We should have let you guys know that it was an accident lockdown. You shouldn't open a Snapchat from your son saying he's locked in a classroom." And here we are yet again with another actual weapon at school and no communication. I don't understand that. You guys put us in this PBIS SEL, and one of the biggest things they talk about is communication and parent involvement, and yet that's still not happening. I find it appalling that I know more about what's going on in your school sometimes than what you guys know. I invite you guys to meetings, nobody shows. And I understand you had an emergency, and that's why you weren't there, and I'm not complaining about that. But my problem is, we have a librarian in an orchestra class with our students as a student, then performing on the stage with our students as a student. That is inappropriate. We do not have adults taking classes with students. They're, we pay tax, my tax dollars pay for that teacher. I'm not paying for an adult to then turn around and be in that class. And the same librarian is the same one bringing these disgusting, appalling books into your school. And yet it takes one person, that same person. She picks out any book she wants, and yet it takes a whole army of us to get these books removed. You talk about how you want kids having an emotional balance, but we have a book in our school right now that my 21-year-old read when she was in the middle school, because we discussed this book. And it's about how to commit suicide and how many different ways to do it. How is that correlate with your PBIS and SEL? And why aren't the parents aware of this PBIS and SEL? I didn't even know about it until my parent meeting that Bill missed. I think y'all need to do better with your communication. There's a reason I pulled my kid out of your school. My elementary daughter, I'll pay the 280 a month and have her at St. Vincent to get a good education, then have her here.
This is John's line.
I will start off with Psalms 127, verse 3. "Though children are heritage of the Lord and a fruit of the womb is his reward." We're going to look out for these children. And I know you'll say, "Oh, our schools are good here. Our schools are good there." The next verse I'm going to read is out of Hosea 4, verse 6. "My people are destroyed for lack of knowledge because thou hast rejected knowledge. I will also reject thee, as thou shan't be no priest to me, seeing thou hast forgotten the law of thy God and will also forget thy children." So I see tonight, we swear, and was that a Bible we swore in on tonight? Okay. And I noticed one of the words said tonight was, "in accordance to the laws now in effect." That brings up a red flag to me. So are we following God's laws or the new laws that have come into fruition in this country with all the woke-ism and everything that's going on? And I watched this with the indoctrination of our kids. And you want to say it's not happening. It's happening all across America. I watched a video of a teacher that was rejected. She got one minute at her school board, a teacher, that went in and tried to state the facts of the indoctrination and the stuff going on in the schools. That was in Halifax, Virginia, I think it was, a teacher. We have, people have gods of their imagination nowadays. And what we're doing to these little kids, putting them through these indoctrination camps in America now. And then we have the suicide problem, the drug problem with kids. And they get a little older, they're confused. Then after they get out of high school, then we send them off to prison because of crimes they commit and they, so the way young people act nowadays. And then all of a sudden, when they're in prison, we take them a Bible. Somebody please get them a Bible. Well, we forgot the laws of God. We're bringing these kids up, we kill them in the womb, indoctrinate them in the schools, and then they're in prison. Like, somebody bring me a Bible. It's because the churches dropped the ball. And I've said it before, a lot of you probably believe in it. This is where it gets ridiculous anymore. You say your three minutes are up, and you sit there with a grin on your face. You don't care. You really would just assume we all go away. Well, we're not going away. And when you start losing kids out of these schools, and they start homeschooling, and we get the legislature to start having the money follow the children, and then the children get homeschooled or private schools or Christian schools, then you'll be in a problem in these schools because you won't have the funds. My thousands of tax dollars won't be coming if people can, the money can follow the kids. It's coming.
Mr. Dennis Simeon?
I'll just speak briefly again about the vaccines. And when I was here before, I had a handout for you with only three minutes. We're now up to 21,000 deaths according to the home government VAERS reporting system and over a million adverse reactions. And I come here tonight because I have three grandchildren that were, shall I say, coerced or suggestion was given to them that they should go home and ask their parents to vaccinate them. I'm really opposed to that. I don't believe the teachers have a doctor's degree in health or are a doctor of medicine, and they should not be suggesting something that our children go home and tell their parents that they would be given more freedom at school if they would just get vaccinated. I want to read a short piece of scripture for you. And I really believe the times we're living, we're living in the latter days. In chapter 6 in Revelation, verse 2, "I saw and behold a white horse; and he that sat on him had a bow and a crown was given unto him; and he went forth conquering them to conquer." If you interpret that, which was written back in the day when the English language wasn't even around yet, Latin for crown is corona. And Greek and Latin for bow, and it uses the word toxin. And toxin is a foreign substance which introduces immune response in the body. And we know back then they used poison on their darts. If this vaccine is killing this many people, I can't believe that we as a nation and we as a people can't wake up and see the truth as terms of what is really going on. And we know that the VAERS reporting system even states not only a small percentage of the cases that occurred get reported on VAERS. And that's just VAERS around the United States. If you add up the United Kingdom and Europe and the EU, there's over 6,500 cases where people died from the vaccine.
Thank you. I do a district update. It is a Happy New Year and a great start to get into a new year. So this is our January 10th meeting. I go ahead and set this slideshow. I did want to set the record straight on a couple of items that were brought to our attention last night. I think it's important sometimes when we hear lots of rumors and things that we look into them. There were several shared with the board in December of which we were quite frankly surprised at. And I looked into, Mrs. MacRaj asked me to look into one of these specifically. So to set the record straight, there was an allegation that there was a middle school incident where there was a sexual assault. Absolutely untrue. There was no sexual assault that took place at the middle school. District officials were made aware of a sexual assault allegation that took place at a private party at a person's home about a month prior. That information came into the school, and kids began to talk about it at school. Once the administration at middle school heard of this, they immediately informed law enforcement and told the kids, "We shouldn't continue to talk about this. This is already being handled by someone else. It happened nearly a month ago." And so just to set that record straight, there was no sexual assault at the middle school. And that's where these rumors just kind of continue. And we need to make sure we're very careful with that. The other thing that surprised me a little bit, there was talk about SAT scores and that our students today, maybe particularly Mount Vernon City School students, are dumber today than they were before. And of course, I have a great deal of pride in our teachers and what they do. In 2014, just to give you an idea, because I could certainly go onto the internet and find an article about SAT scores. But since 2014, Mount Vernon City Schools and Ohio predominantly has been taking the ACT, and we've not even been taking the SAT scores. They also changed something in 2014 where they said that every single student in the state of Ohio must take this ACT test their junior year. It used to be prior to that that only those who were interested in going to college would take these tests. Well, naturally, if you have every single person taking the test and you put those into mean scores, those certainly are going to be interpreted differently. But I did find it interesting with the SAT comments. And so I went back, and we do have some students who take SAT tests in Mount Vernon City Schools. And I was really pleasantly surprised to find out that the national SAT English score mean is 528, and Mount Vernon, it's 590. The math scores are 523, and in Mount Vernon, they're 580. The total score for SATs across the nation is 1051, and the students in Mount Vernon who took those scores are 1170. So I just don't believe that our students are dumber today. We've set standards that the school, Ohio School Board sets with the state legislature, and those have changed over the years. So standards have become much more rigorous. Our students are doing things today at grade levels they were not doing 20 years ago. And so I'm proud of what our teachers are doing within the school setting. We're not making our students dumber. And I didn't include this on here because I heard Mrs. Quinn share this comment a little bit ago about transparency. The incident she's referring to was something that we became aware of on a Friday about noon from Centerburg Local Schools, who said they had a student who posed a picture on Facebook or Twitter. I don't recall what it was. TikTok. And so Centerburg was aware of this, and they got law enforcement involved. The student never came to Centerburg, never came to the Career Center, is a Centerburg student, attending the Career Center, has nothing to do with Mount Vernon City Schools. So when we found out that the student was not in school, that law enforcement was involved, why do we have to share all of that information with Mount Vernon City School parents about a Centerburg student? We didn't see the need to cause them to panic over something that was not even an issue at that point. So this idea of transparency that we're not willing to share, we'll share the stuff I believe we need to know and hear. I don't think that we needed to hear about that on the last day of school before the break when it didn't involve us. So I just wanted to make sure I could set that record straight as well. We have been meeting, and I appreciate our teachers and our classified staff and their due diligence relative to COVID. Obviously, we were hoping we would be turning a corner. And with the holiday break, we were well aware that it could get interesting when we return from break. We have been working on contingency plans if need be, but I want the board to know and our community to know that our primary educational goal is to keep all of our students at school. I mean, our primary educational goal is to keep all of our students at school. And so there's some factors to consider there, and I think those are worth mentioning. Teacher absences are really important. And if teacher absences rise to a level that makes the operation of the school quite challenging, then we need to be aware of what those are. We met as an administrative team last week, and we went building by building and said, "Okay, we need to have all hands on deck." And so we're going to use everyone, from our title teachers to our academic tutors, to our special education teachers, our social workers, our specialists, so that we can keep kids in school. How many teachers' absence would it, would need to be there for us to maybe change course? And we sat down and identified those things. And that was really, really important for us to do. We also have some plans in school that we can emergency subdivide classrooms if possible at the middle school and high school. We can do study halls, we can use planning periods. All that to say, we have been doing everything that we can to try to mitigate potential absences as we go through. We're also looking to bring back the month of January pandemic subs to make sure we have additional subs in each building so we can handle whatever may come our way. Transportation, we met with the transportation department. What you're hearing, quite frankly, in the Columbus area is they're struggling with transportation. And so when bus drivers find themselves having to stay home due to COVID, you just can't pick some up off the street to drive a bus. And so we sat down with that group and determined that we could, we could absorb up to five individuals if they would happen to not be able to work due to COVID or other things. And so we've got some alternatives in place if we went that direction, needed to go in that direction. Food service, we've talked about the same kinds of things there. You know, when it gets to students, factors to consider, students, of course. We're monitoring those absences as we go. We taking careful consideration of absences at the building level, at grade levels, and across the district. We're not going to try to tie some sort of a metric to that at this point. We've been given some new guidelines. Those are the third factors to consider there. Positive cases, as you made, and I know the board is aware because we communicate with you, that the CDC has went from 10 days to five days for a positive case. Again, versus 10, providing that when those students or staff members would return, they would return with a mask for the continuance of that 10-day period. Close contacts, we advocated for some things way back in August that have been working for the district for several months now. Those continue to go. It's called the Mask to Stay Policy. Again, if a student or staff member is deemed a close contact to a positive case, they can remain in school, provided they do symptom checks daily and they wear a mask for 10 days. So we're, we're trying everything we can to make sure we can mitigate these things and keep our students in school. Just to give you an idea, this has been updated since this afternoon. Fridays count. When I left on Friday, we had 56 students. When I left on Friday, we had fifty-six students in the isolation category and seven staff members. And the high school and the middle school had forty-one students combined. I must have missed the S and the D and the M. As of after school today, on Monday, we have thirty-two students currently in active isolation, twelve staff members, and we continue to update that on a regular basis. Again, I think one of the benefits is our ability to keep kids in school. The five days can move pretty quickly. Ten days certainly takes a longer period of time. Just to give you an idea of our cumulative numbers, last year, our yearly totals, we had three hundred and fifty-four students who had contacted COVID last year. Now, again, that was a different variant, new variant this year, and fifty-eight staff members. As of today, from August nineteenth to January tenth, we've had three hundred and forty students contract the new variants and fifty-four staff members. Thankfully, we've been able, most, everyone has been able to work through those difficult challenges along the way. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. And finally, you're going to be approving our district calendar tonight. And just a few quick highlights there as we've worked with both of our unions to do this. The teacher's starting date will be August fifteenth, with students starting August eighteenth. Parent teacher conferences, we've moved them from November into October, really tying into the week after the first nine weeks. Our Thanksgiving break has changed just a little bit. It used to be where we would just go Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. We have followed that up with the following Monday, and that will really align us with the Career Center and our surrounding districts. You look at the winter break, it is a full two-week winter break, and January second is a Monday, so we'll not come back the day after New Year's. Spring break is April third through the tenth. We have added that day after Easter for folks who are doing a lot of traveling. And of course, Good Friday is during that time as well. Graduation is Sunday, May twenty-eighth. Students' last day is May thirty-first, and teachers' last day is June first. Probably the first time this has happened in a long time, the semesters are perfectly aligned with eighty-seven student days in both sections. So I just wanted to provide that little bit of a district update there. And this next part of our agenda, I'm kind of excited to share this with you. We shared a little bit and some correspondence I have with you about giving hope to charity. And I have a couple of folks here who might want to share, but I'm gonna let the video do the talking, if that's okay. Or if you want to say something right now, let the video speak first.
I think it was because of COVID. I think it was a hundred, but last year. And that made a suggestion that we take our candy and go for fun, but we don't spend it on ourselves. Spend it on some kids in need. And I had been to a shop for a coffee blend with my granddaughter, and she loved it. And I thought, why not go shopping with a bus driver? And so we put together, we just put together a small, we put a heart for good to kids. We took the money we had, we spread about twelve hundred dollars. We had another thirteen to it, another one hundred dollars to it, another donations. And we decided to put this program together where we took, we went to the schools, the elementary schools. And we had six kids. And those six kids, the elementary schools picked them for us. And so we developed a shopping gate for them. And the big surprise of that day, we had two hundred dollars each gift. And instead of the kids taking that two hundred dollars, because they didn't have much of anything, they could have spent it on themselves. They were filling their carts full of gifts from mom, dad, or siblings. And from that point, we knew we had to do it again. So we went out this year, we created a charity, decided that we would put our hearts and soul into that charity so that we could do it again, and maybe get the six more kids this year to do it. And then we got the six, the twenty-six, and then the twenty for twelve, and then the twenty for nineteen, and then we added twenty, and we had a nice little middle school, and, you know, just a love for the kids. Really. I mean, we see so much need in Mount Vernon City Schools. And anybody can step up and fill that deed, anybody can come forward and do a good deed, and as we want to do. We don't want anything left behind because we can't afford what we can, we can't get rights to kids. We want to be a charity that supports Mount Vernon City Schools. And we are not only for them. We still are working out our ideas. How do we become useful for Mount Vernon City Schools? But I think we thank you, because we got some great people that's with big hearts for the schools. And we do these kids with a bus driver, and, you know, put us on our face with my old symbols and stuff like that. Just give him.
We so look forward to doing this. Even before I was a bus driver last year, I came to this event while I was still a teacher, because I knew a couple of the kids that were coming in, and just wanted to see them have fun, their faces light up. It happened. So I couldn't wait to get involved in it from the end of this year. Well, not helping the kids, especially maybe the less fortunate, hard-time kids. It's just look, bring away help. That's why I'm here.
Okay, so I'm new to it this year. So this is my first experience. I got involved. Christine Roman told me the idea, and I'm like, oh, I love this idea. And I'm excited to be here today. I think my part's gonna be the one that will make this year in China.
I like to do this because it's a lot of fun for a lot. We get to make kids happy, and it's a lot of joy for Christmas and holidays.
So tell me why you do this?
I do this to help the kids and to make them have a Merry Christmas, and make a message for them and so they enjoy what's going on. It's the Christmas spirit. I mean, everyone loves Santa, and wants to just bring joy to everyone in the room. My favorite is the faces of the kids when you see them walking in the room, and they just lights up the day and makes them so happy.
The reason I do this and work at this charity and remain on the floor is because it's all about the kids and being a driver, not just knowing the kids, but seeing where they live, I realize.
This feels good. It makes the heart grow. And everything else you've got going on, and to see the joy that it brings to these kids, and to see the love they have for their families, and they are not even thinking about themselves. They want to help others. It just, it makes it all right. They just want to help. It's just Christmas spirit. I love it.
I know I showed a lot of videos tonight, and they'll tend to do that at every board meeting, but I thought that was one that was really well done. And Dave and Doug are both here tonight, and they really kind of started this thing. And it's a tribute to Mike's group and the classified group of transportation. This is really something that appealed to them. I think they have desires to grow in different directions to serve students. And so, you know, they're more than just bus drivers. They care about their kids. I don't know, do you want to add to any of that or not?
I don't know how much you talked to the board about this year. We got something really special. We got enough money to add high school, middle school to this mix, but it was a very, you know, it was very elementary type of, you know, Christmas holiday, money, you know. So how do we get the high school, middle school involved, the older kids to buy into this? So we work with the principals and the counselors. And what we wanted to do was to bring in high school, middle school students that, you know, were in need financially, were in need, you know, might not even be financially, it could just be a hardship for the family. And we told them that we needed them to help, to be elves this year. And just to come on board and shop with us and be with the kids, help them pick out toys. And so the high school, middle school didn't know they were getting anything. And when we came in, and they shopped for a while, and they were all involved, I told them when they came in the door, I said, make these little kids feel special. And they did that. These high school, middle school kids weren't expecting it to happen. And we tapped them on the shoulder about halfway through, and we said, we're shopping for you. And the look on their faces and the story we gained from that were amazing. And if it wasn't for the principals and the counselors who worked well with us and picked the right kids, Bill Cedar supporting this whole program, I mean, it's amazing. We all walked away with different stories from each of the kids. And it's, hopefully, this thing would just grow for us. And I want to thank you all.
I think we should give them a hand.
Okay, we'll move to the more voted by part of the agenda. We have one item for board approval tonight in sections, the 2022, 2023 district calendar.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve that item. Thank you, Ms. Regoldai. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Getzman. Were there any comments or questions about the new calendar?
I just want to express my appreciation to Mr. Cedar and to both unions for their hard work and diligence, putting the calendar together, because I know there was some back and forth. And I think we have a beautiful calendar for our students and staff next year. So thank you for your hard work on that.
Like all the breaks.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, perfectly timed. Yes. And the calendar is aligned. I was looking at county calendars today as well, and they're very, they're aligned. So that's nice when the schools are all on the same schedule. That helps a lot. So thank you for all of that.
Thank you. Okay, what do you call the role, please?
Ms. Regoldai.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzman.
Yes.
Mr. Workman. Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carried. Thank you. For Student Achievement Liaison Report, I would just like to focus on the K, the five K-12 educational technology trends to watch in 2022. And I'd like to point out that in 2021, districts with more than a thousand students accessed an average of one thousand four hundred forty-nine ed tech products online each month of the school year. And that's according to research data by Learn Platform. And they're now seeing an increase in teachers and students burned out on technology. So they're saying that educators and IT K-12 administrators need to integrate technology in ways that are meaningful and intentional, and then make their lives easier. Technology is with us. It's here to stay, but we need to use it wisely. The five ways are, the first one is artificial intelligence and machine learning, which are data-driven and rely on inputs by the educator who understands what the output should be. And currently, Mount Vernon City Schools is not using AI or ML, but AI, artificial intelligence, is embedded in some new learning and intervention programs. The second is cloud technology. And through Google Classroom, we, Mount Vernon City Schools is using cloud technology. All files and file sharing are done in the cloud. Also, we have a variety of programs that are cloud-based with direct connections through a portal on the internet. And cloud learning really was a benefit to schools when they had all of the online remote work and their network infrastructures wouldn't have handled it otherwise. So it did benefit many schools during the pandemic and remote learning. The third is cybersecurity, that helps schools defend against growing security threats. And Mount Vernon City Schools participates in LACA, which is the Licking Area Computer Association in Mount Vernon, is one of nineteen school districts, and they manage our cybersecurity for us. The fourth is asynchronous learning, which gives students more freedom to learn at their own, in their own time. And for those of you who aren't familiar with synchronous and asynchronous, synchronous learning just means learning in time when you're participating in a class live, and asynchronous is when the learning is recorded, and students can just access it in their own time. Mount Vernon City Schools, many teachers are still continuing to use through video and Google Classroom asynchronous. And I think how helpful it is for students when they can go back and review a lesson or even see it ahead of time. So I think that is really helpful. And the fifth is esports program in K through twelve. And we know that competitions are expanding globally. Currently, Mount Vernon City Schools doesn't have an esports program, so we'll see what the future holds. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bennett. I'm still trying to figure out how esports is a sport. I think it's fun. Unless, I guess the fingers constitute some physical activity, but it is becoming quite popular.
The article, excuse me, the article did point out, though, that bringing it into the schools would also help students prepare for careers in those areas, because there are lots of options career-wise.
Exactly what I was going to mention. Because on the news earlier today, there was, there's a Ohio-based company that uses welding robots. But because of the intricate workings of those robots, they are hiring students who are really proficient in technology. And he started out with twenty employees, and now he has two hundred. So even though we are moving towards technology, there are still going to be many jobs out there for our children to grow into that we have no idea what it's going to be like.
And I would say that robotics, we do have, and quite a program, we've shared with the board, some of our robotics things in the past, drone technology, some of those things we are currently doing in schools, and programming as well, that I think certainly are career-based. So I have one item for board approval tonight in this section. It's the Washington DC class trip. We've been two years where that's been canceled. There certainly is hope that the eighth graders will be able to take that Washington DC class trip. I've included the cancellation policy there for you. There is a date in April, and we'll have to really kind of get a sense for where things are as we get closer to that date in April. There may be a little loss of funds that are put forth for that. Right now, the trip costs every student about five hundred and fifteen dollars. There are some scholarships available. They are not really fundraising for this event. The Ariel Foundation and Ariel Corporation have always been kind contributors to this particular trip, which brings a trip, which is originally, you know, in that upper six hundred dollars down to five hundred dollars. So we're thankful. so we're thankful to them as well. So we're asking for your approval tonight to continue to move forward with the trip. And then, as we get close to April, we'll make some final decisions.
Thank you, I would entertain a motion to approve the Washington DC class trip. Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. Were there any questions? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Regola-Dye.
Yes.
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carrying, thank you. Fiscal services.
No, I'm good. This is the last time that I will be telling you that this is very, very boilerplate, because we've already received our first payment in January from the state, which has changed drastically as they were trying to catch up with the legislation that was passed. They finally did so, and we've started to see that in our first January payment, but that is not represented here since this is the close of the month of December. As I've been telling the board for months now, I've been literally changing pennies at the end of some of these amounts, because the state is sending us, basically, had been sending us the same amount, month after month after month, while they were working on the other end to get caught up with the legislation that passed in the biennial budget. So, again, this is very boilerplate, not much change, but pennies on the ends of some of these numbers. You can scroll down just a little bit there, Mr. Cedar, keep going into the investments. Obviously, we're not earning nearly what we were earning in previous years, but we're still have some money out that we are investing. And unless the board has any questions on this, I can move on to the appropriations amendment. Obviously, as a board, you know, anytime we're going to spend money, you have to approve it. At the beginning of the year, I sort of make estimates based off of previous years regarding how much we're going to spend in each category. Sometimes I can get shocked in those, especially in the federal realm, because sometimes they send a lot more money than they have in the past. This one was just purely me forgetting how different the past two years had been, and underestimating what we would be spending in athletics. So appropriating some additional funds in athletics and asking for the board approval. You'll see, every time you approve, when I leave it on there, I hope that's helpful. I could take those off and just focus on the one, but it allows us to kind of go back and look at the history. Sometimes we get a grant that we didn't know, so we have to change an appropriation early in the fiscal year. But now that we're into January, we start to have changes to appropriations somewhat fairly regularly, because they're all based on estimates. Do you have a memorial book to read, and I'll do that, and then if the board has any questions, try to answer them at that time. So we have a book in memory of Mark Crawford, the brother of Deb Ornalis, who is our district vision specialist. The title of that book is History Smashers: Pearl Harbor, and it was donated to the Twin Oak Elementary Library.
I would entertain a motion to approve those fiscal services items, as read. Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Getzmann, were there any questions? Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Regola-Dye.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carrying, thank you. And Ms. Regola-Dye.
Thank you. Just as a brief review, in 2019, 199 bills were introduced, and four that have been introduced in that year were passed. Focusing on a few additional bills that have been introduced, HB 615 introduced in 2020 would authorize installation of barriers on school buses with the rules on those barriers directed by the Director of Public Safety. HB 185 is in regard to the eligibility for publicly funded childcare. SB 218 would prohibit public schools from beginning the school day earlier than 8:30 a.m. And just for your information, I contacted our representative Rick Carfagna, urging him and his colleagues to vote no on HB 126, as amended by the Senate. OSBA asked us to contact our representatives because HB 126 would alter the system by which school boards can challenge property evaluations. For example, school districts would be prohibited from filing an initial complaint, and would be prohibited from appealing a Board of Revision decision. A Board of Revision can be made up of a county treasurer, auditor, or a member of the county commission. I also contacted Representative Brett Dilller concerning Education Transparency Act, which I feel is redundant, since the standards are readily available for all Ohioans to view on the Ohio Board website, State of Education. And the Education Transparency Act would require teachers to pose all standards related to the subjects they teach, and this is just another burden on the time constraints our teachers face every day. So that's my report right now. Does anybody have any questions or comments, or? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have one section for approval here in this section, seven facility use requests. Item A and B go together, it's the Good News Club. We're at the Good News Clubs at East Elementary and the middle school. Item C and D are use of the public libraries for valid books. Item E is for Cub Scouts, Little Stingers, and Pride Kid Fitness. Those facility use requests for your approval tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Cedar, and I would appreciate a motion for the facility use request. Thank you, Mr. Ward, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye. Were there any questions? Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Ms. Regola-Dye.
Yes.
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carrying, thank you. And student services.
Under the Student Services section, no item for information.
Oh, just that, you can read it. All right, I have just one item tonight, and that's the memo of understanding. Some of you may have recalled that we have had the foster grandparent program before. Right now, we just have one grandparent who is working at Wigan Street, but this memo of understanding is between us and the agency that supplies those. There's no cost to the district, they do all of the legwork in finding those individuals that want to help us, and then we just figure out what students they would work with in the buildings. So this is just a MOU that we'd like your approval from.
I would entertain a motion to approve that item, as read. Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye.
I'll second.
Mr. Workman will second. Were there any questions? Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Regola-Dye.
Yes.
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carrying. Personnel?
Under personnel and certificated licensed staff, just one item for information. Is already changed notice for two employees. Item B is number five and recommend for board approval tonight. In the employment section, you're looking at some one-year contracts, some additional volunteers, substitute teachers as we continue to work towards improving that pool, and you're seeing supplemental contracts for spring, extra pay as well. Those items for your approval tonight.
Thank you, I would entertain a motion for those certificated staff license.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ward, and do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Getzmann. Were there any questions? Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Ms. Regola-Dye.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carrying, thank you. Classified staff?
Classified staff, no items for information tonight. Just a number of items for board approval, a couple two-year contracts, and some additional substitute employment for the classified subpool. And we have one resignation tonight for your approval.
I would entertain a motion for those personnel items?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Workman, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye. Were there any questions? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Ms. Regola-Dye.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carrying, thank you. At this time, we have an opportunity for board member comments. And Mrs. Getzmann, would you like to lead?
Again, I would just like to say thank you to the bus drivers for your event that you put together, just top-notch, and just shows the input and the impact that you have in our community and with our students. So thank you very much for that, heartwarming. And to Jeremiah Armstrong, our RSO, with our new little puppy onboard, our little Burna Doodle, if I'm correct, is that right, Burna Doodle? I think is how you pronounce it. So exciting, I'll be excited to see who gets the honor of naming the puppy. But I think that's a great emotional support for our students when they can wrap their arms and express their love unconditionally to something, so. Great things going on.
Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone coming tonight, and for those at home who are watching. Again, thank you, a deep gratitude that we have toward our staff. And when we were watching the video about the giving charity, it came to mind that we educate the whole child. And that education comes from our bus drivers, our custodians, our food personnel, our teachers, our secretaries, our nurses, the principals, our superintendent. We are all involved in educating the whole child, whatever that might be, that will get them some success and a feeling of accomplishment. And I continue to be amazed at what we do. I've spent thirty-five years in the classroom, and today I have all the admiration of the world for our educators. So thank you for everything you do, and for truly being part of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Well, this is my first board meeting, and so we get to share this moment together. So thank you all for coming out this evening. I consider it, you know, quite an honor and a privilege to, you know, serve the community and serve this school district. And I appreciate the voter's support and entrusting that responsibility to me. And I just thank you all for being here and allowing me to be a part of this. Thank you.
Glad to have you too.
It's always tough going last. There's been so many good things that I don't want to be redundant, but just, again, wanted to thank everyone for coming. Happy New Year. A lot of really great things are happening, you guys doing a great job with that. That was, that was really neat to see. I'd like to welcome Jeff, looking forward to working with him. And again, just my sincere appreciation, thank you.
I guess I would like to just reiterate what everyone else has said. I enjoyed the article about the puppy too, and seeing the video, I watched it at home, and it's, it's hard not to cry, I mean, it just really brings tears to your eyes. It's very heartwarming, so thank you for giving our bus drivers that opportunity, because we know when you give like that, it really blesses your heart. So, and we're teaching our kids to be giving too, so thank you for being such a great example for our community. And at this time, I think we have a request for executive session for the purpose of employment, is that correct? I would entertain a motion then to go into executive session. Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Getzmann, and if you'll call the roll.
Ms. Regola-Dye.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carrying, the board will be in executive session. Did you want to add any last-minute things?
No, I will, we'll bring back the board as well, the time, the conversation about Jeremiah, our SRO, and his dairy dog. We had a unique kind of ceremony at the middle school. I know on our district website, you could read about this information, but the cost of the dog and all the maintenance and upkeep, that was all coordinated and worked collaboratively with number of peace departments. And there's some really exciting research about that, and so we're excited to share that with you in the future.
Great, thank you. Okay, we are in executive session.